All right, well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order at 7:03. The our the regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees on March
Carla, I'm on the
On March 10th, 2022. And I'd like to just kind of, if we could go back and do some quick introductions. I think some of our Board of Trustees people weren't here last month. And also, we're doing a switch off tonight with our friends Sally Kilby. And had told us that Ellen Torres would be joining us again. So if we could just go quickly and introduce ourselves again as we wait for one more trustee to come on. So Dean, let me start with you.
I was having trouble getting to the mute button there. My name is Dean Sirwin. I am a, I guess now a longer time resident. I've lived here almost 20 years now, about 18 years. Two kids that grew up here. We moved in when they were a year and a half old. They're now off at college. I'm involved in many things around town. Formerly involved with scouts. I forget which one of you two had listed that you were FJ with with seven. I was with one, 342. It was with staff on the spark board, a bunch of, bunch of stuff, part of the only aunt's club on the foundation, only on the foundation as well. And I guess I feel the need to have something every night of the week. That's me.
Thank you, Dean. And Ellen, how about if we have you introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Ellen Torres. I am the current president of the Friends of the South Pasadena Public Library. I am a lifelong resident of South Pasadena, born and raised, went through all those schools here, as did for my adult children. I have been involved in probably everything you can imagine, soccer coach, ASL, PTA president at every site, staff, you name it. Like Dean, I think that I need to volunteer. I was saying this is my fourth Zoom today for volunteering. I'm currently on the California State Board of PTA, the Vice President of Convention, which is huge. So that's where all of these meetings are coming from. So I'm really excited to be back and look forward to all these trustee meetings. Thank you.
Thanks. Welcome back, Ellen. And then Kenny, can we just have you introduce yourself briefly again to the new Ellen and Dean? Yeah.
Sure. Okay, I'll skip the stuff that from last meeting, but I was glad to get my, my feet wet last month. And some of my backgrounds in the minutes, but I'm not lifelong resident of South Pass, but like a half lifelong resident of South Pass. And I, in addition to the other stuff, I coached Little League here for several years, including the undefeated A's. We were 18 and 0, including the playoffs. I don't know, the kids were seven or eight years old. So that's my, that's my highlight. And it's first meeting was fun. It was short, shorter than I expected. So that's, that's, that's what I have in, in mind, which I expect every meeting to be an hour or less. It was perfect.
I know about an hour or less, but I'm, my goal is to get us out in less than two.
Yeah, thanks, Kenny. And FJ, if we can have you just introduce yourself again real quick. You're on mute.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I, I've lived in South Pass 23 years. My wife taught first grade at Marengo for 12 of those. So Dean, just, I won't do the career stuff, but I'll tell you, I was a scout master of Troop Seven for 13 years. Just stepped down and now the Assistant Scout Master. And yeah, and it was nice to bump into Kenny in the park a couple of Saturdays ago. I got to meet him in person. That was, that was terrific. So I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Well, soon, soon. And, and again, as we all know, we're still in the Zoom and the public can join us. There is a Zoom link so that the public can join us. And we're all hopefully safe and the staff that are in the library, Sean and Kathy are safe. And then I believe Sally is just on as a public member. And I think that's it. Oh, do we need to take roll call?
Yeah, we should do a roll call. Let's go ahead, even though we don't have Annie. Let's just go ahead and do that.
Bianca Richards?
Present.
Dean Sirwin?
Here.
Kenneth Gross?
Here.
FJ Pratt?
Here.
Thank you.
And I, Diana, I'm sorry, but, but everybody knows you. And Diana Mahmood is our council liaison. And she's joining us tonight also, as every month. And do we have any presentations?
No.
And any public comment?
No.
Okay. And for the newest members, you'll see that we have wonderful minutes. Thank you to Sean. And so did everybody get a chance to review the minutes? Our minutes are always very thorough.
They're very helpful.
Yeah.
I missed the meeting. I felt left out.
Yeah.
But I felt like I'd been there.
Are there any edits, comments, questions? Hey, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve of the minutes of the February 10th? Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. All right. It's been moved in second that the, the meeting, the minutes of February 10th have been approved. Thank you very much.
We just need to do a vote on that.
Thank you.
Bianca Richards?
Yes.
Dean Sirwin?
Yes.
Kenneth Gross?
Yes.
FJ Pratt?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then moving on to item number four, I do we need to wait for Annie? Should we wait?
Well, do we have a quorum?
We have a quorum. Why don't you go ahead, Bianca, and tell us what the nominating committee, you and Dean, as the nominating committee are proposing?
Yeah. So, and thank you all. I outreach to everybody on an individual basis and I got your input. And I did review the bylaws, which was probably smart to do. And I am, I've filled up my term as president. And so I reached out and Dean is interested in being president, then I would switch. I'm interested in being Vice President. I was hoping that Annie would be here. Ellen, Annie would like to be the liaison to the friends, only if the meetings are at nighttime. If the meetings aren't at nighttime, then she would stay as being the secretary. She said she's fine being the secretary. And then I would be fine being the liaison to the friends because I, I have more time during the day.
Are the meetings? So we're, I'm going to send out a little survey. We'll discuss it at the March 17th. But there's a whole variety of things, early morning, staying the same, doing like back and forth at night or whatever. So it hasn't been decided. I'm sorry.
Then maybe, then I think Annie will probably stay as secretary because she has, she isn't able to go to the day meetings. So on, that is the slate. And then Ken and FJ, as the newest members, they declined any positions at this time. So that, that is the slate that Dean and I are presenting to you tonight. Do we need to vote on this or?
I think we do. Do we have any debate?
Do you have any questions? All right. Do I have a motion? Then it would be Dean Sirwin would be president. And this is for the 2022, 23. Dean Sirwin is president, Bianca Richards is Vice President. And then Annie Chang Long is Secretary. And then myself, Bianca, again, is the liaison to the friends. Um, do I have a motion for the slate?
Probably shouldn't make a motion for myself.
What? I think Kenny.
To approve. Yeah, I was moved. I moved to approve the slate.
And I second that.
All right. It's been moved in second, the, the new officers in terms for the 2022, 23. So I now pass over this.
We vote?
Yes, we need to do a vote.
I would forget about voting. I just
It says something about you.
I guess I'm a, I don't know, a dictator or something.
He keeps the meeting going all the better.
Bianca Richards?
Yes.
Dean Sirwin?
Yes.
Kenneth Gross?
Yes.
FJ Pratt?
Yes.
Thank you. And Dean, I'll be sending the minutes to you for your signature.
Woo hoo.
And then I just have a question. When Annie comes on, do we need to do anything when she does come on or are we okay?
I think we're okay.
We're okay.
Okay. All right. So thank you, everybody, for letting me be president for these past couple of years. I've really enjoyed it. And now
Thank you, Bianca. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. I, just, just so that everyone knows, I was very happy to have Bianca continue for a third term, but she checked the bylaws and she couldn't. So I appreciate your support and trust in me, and I'll try not to muck it up too poorly. I believe that all I get to do now is say, our next item, item five, is a discussion of the proposed library hours.
That's correct. Thank you for that introduction. So in your packet, item five has some information about proposed library hours. The library would like to go back to its full slate of hours, starting April 4th, which is the first Monday in April. And staff discussed a variety of options. One would be to go back to our exact same schedule that we had pre-pandemic, which is listed here in your packet. And that had three nights where we were open till 9:00 PM. What we're proposing is a slightly different schedule. It's actually one hour more than per week than the previous schedule, which was 57 hours a week. The schedule we're proposing is 58 hours a week. And the main difference is that we open an hour earlier in the morning on the weekdays, on the, on the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And we close an hour earlier. That hour between eight and nine PM anecdotally is not very busy. And I think that the morning hour between 10 and 11 will be much more useful for folks. It also allows us to do storytime on any day of the week. Because previously, when we only opened at 10 on Mondays and Fridays, we had to do storytime on Mondays and Fridays. So the new schedule would have us open at 10 o'clock Monday through Saturday, which would make it easy for us to make changes, to do storytime on a different day if we had some need to do that. And it also is just an easier schedule, I think, for people to remember. Instead of a bunch of different start times, every, you know, every different day of the week, it's just 10 AM Monday through Saturday and then Fri- and then Saturday, Sunday back to one to five. So that's the proposal. And if you guys are amenable to that, we would have you vote to, to propose that. And then those would be our new hours as of April 4th.
I think it makes a lot of sense to have a consistent start time. It's very confusing to be, okay, which day is it?
Yeah.
I think.
I agree.
One question I have for you, Kathy, is, and I know it'd be anecdotal because you're not open, but were people chomping at the bit to get in when you opened at 11 o'clock? Were they waiting outside? Have you had commentary from people saying, hey, how come you, you didn't open at 10 today or things like that?
I would say not commentary because they were so accustomed to it, but definitely people waiting and ready to get in as soon as the doors were unlocked. Not hordes, you know, not hordes of people, but definitely people who are, you know, ready to be there and be there when the library opens, for sure. Yeah. And just based on even now, while we're closed, we're not opening until one. And, you know, we're inside doing the holds and doing various library work. You know, people come up to the door and early as 10.
Have hours ever changed between winter and summer?
Never between winter and summer. They've changed over the years. I think the last big change was right before, maybe I came, maybe in about 2016. That's when I think they went to that 9:00 PM. And it had to do with, I think, the public programming that would have been happening in the community room. So they thought, oh, we should stay open later because if we're having an event on a, like on a Thursday night, or it's farmer's market night, we want to be open so that people can, who are, who are in the area for farmer's market can either attend the events or come to the library. So that's the last time I think there was a big change. But no, we've never had seasonal hours.
And I, the, the storytime availability is wonderful. Now that you guys are programming again at storytime, it's been very popular. And it's been outside and it's been very, very popular. And I know it's bringing a lot more people to the library. So that's good. And then I have another question. What, what, what about the Wi-Fi? Is the, what are the Wi-Fi hours?
The Wi-Fi, oh, I hope I have this right. I want to say that it goes on at 8:00 AM and goes off at 10:00 PM, seven days a week.
I believe that's right.
Is that right, Sean? Thank you.
I think, yeah.
So does the Wi-Fi, I've never actually asked this before. Does the Wi-Fi go into the park or is it just within the building?
It's available close to the building when you're outside. I have not actually like walked it off to see when you lose it. But you know, if you're sitting at the patio tables, or you're on a balcony, or you're on the El Centro side, you know, little area there in front of the doors, you would get the Wi-Fi. But I don't think
Why, why it would go after the library is closed?
Um, well, partly for events. So if we're doing something and we need it, it's, it's kind of a lot of trouble to have to ask to have it adjusted. If we need the Wi-Fi for an event on a, on a program night. And people do use it up to 10 o'clock. It's been a discussion point before, and we definitely want it to be off at 10 because that's when the park closes. So that's, that's kind of what it ties to is when the park closes, that's when the Wi-Fi goes off.
I'm not to go off topic. But have we had any movement on the, what are the boundaries of the library and when does it become the park?
Um, well, what we're looking at is, is the code of conduct and having certain parts of the exterior, the parts that are closest to the building, like the patio, like the balconies, and like the
That's what I'm referring to.
Sorry, say that again?
That's what I'm referring to. So
Yeah. So progress. No, we have not changed the code of conduct yet to, to do that, but it's on our, it's on our to-do list.
I, I think it's an excellent idea that we do it. If we need a motion, I would make a motion to adopt the new hours.
Yeah. Are you making the motion then, Dean? I second it. I second it.
Can, can I make the motion as a, as president? My, I'll do. Point of order?
Diana?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have, we have a motion made and seconded. Sean, will you call a vote, please?
Sure. Dean Sirwin?
Hi.
Bianca Richards?
Yes.
Kenneth Gross?
Yes.
FJ Pratt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion made, carried. Excellent. This will be easier when we're in person and I can have the, the things right in front of me. I believe that our next item is to discuss the strategic planning, item number six.
Yes. So I had hoped that we would be actually looking at proposals tonight and making a selection. But what happened is that we only received one proposal on February 22nd, which was the due date. So I have spent the last, since that time, kind of beating the pushes to try to drum up some proposals. And it looks like at this point, we'll end up with four proposals with an extended deadline of March 25th. So we'll get those proposals all in by March 25th. And then the subcommittee that we, we formed with Bianca and Annie will review them. And anybody else that would like to see all four proposals is welcome to do that. I'm happy to send them to everybody. But the two that are officially the subcommittee that can meet together are, are Bianca and Annie. So we'll have a couple of weeks there to review those proposals and make a decision. And then at the April 14th Board Meeting, we can select consultant. So that is where that stands. And in terms of why people didn't apply, I did talk to a lot of the people that I sent it to, and it was mostly having to do with, they're already busy, they already have jobs, they just didn't have the time in their schedule to take it on. But I think we have at least, so far I have two proposals. Both of them are good. And I think I have two more very good ones coming as well. So I think we'll be able to have an adequate pool to use and make a decision based on the four that we do get.
Thank you. And as always, Kathy, I want to commend you for your diligence and, and your, you know, your, you go above and beyond always in your job. So I appreciate that greatly.
Well, thank you. I was a little bit
It would have been easy to just say, well, decision made. We only got one.
I know. Oh, boy. I was like, oh, this is not good. So, but, but I think we're going to be okay. I feel good about the proposals that we're going to get. So I know that we'll have four good ones to choose from. And they'll, they'll be distinct from one another. So it'll be interesting to see what we think is best for us. So that's the update on that.
Again, not to belabor this because I do want to get us out quick. What is the game plan? Is it that Bianca and Annie and you will winnow it down and just say, we looked at all four, here's the one? Or are we, you're going to give us your opinion and we're going to discuss all four at the April 14th meeting? I just want us to all be prepared for that.
Yeah. Well, when I thought we might have like nine or 10 proposals, I sort of assumed that, that we would come to you with a subset to, to look at. So since we only have four, I think it makes sense probably just to summarize all four of them for you. And, 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 you know, yes, we may come and say, here, here are all four. We really like this one or that one or these two. But I think since there's only four, we should probably just go ahead and summarize all four for you.
Great. Well, let's, let's jam through tonight because I want everyone to be aware that next month will probably be a little bit longer of a meeting because we want to take our time to give a good evaluation. So item number seven, the fun one. Volunteer recognition. Seems like it's going to be more of a tea than luncheon.
I know. I saw after we published the agenda, I saw that we used the word luncheon. We're so accustomed to that, that phrase that we didn't even notice that it didn't say what it should say. So yes, it's a tea, not a luncheon. And basically, you know, we've put out the app, we've put out the invitations. We haven't, we sent out paper invitations like that. I have yet to send the official invitation by email and calendar invite to the council members and the city, city manager and deputy city manager. But I'll do that after we speak tonight. The mayor has RSVP'd based on the paper invitation already. So we're working on the program and what that will look like. I think it'll, it'll probably be, you know, the library director welcoming folks, introducing the, the president of the board to say a few words. Dean is typically what happens. And of course, the mayor will likely want to say a few words. We, we can talk about that offline, but typically the, the board president talks a little bit about the total number of volunteer hours that year and how much money the bookstore brought in and things like that. And just, and just thanks them. And then we have, we had hoped to have, and I don't remember if I told you this last month or not, but we had hoped to have Rick Thomas talk about the two collections. Somebody, if you're not speaking
If they're not speaking.
Thank you so much. So we had hoped to have Rick Thomas speak about the, the collections that we purchased from him about two years ago now. But he declined to do that. He's not doing public speaking any longer. So we're going to have Olivia Radville, who's our local history librarian, do the presentation. So she's working on that now. It'll probably be a combination of sort of highlights from local history about the local history collection. She'll probably talk a little bit about the memory lab since she has the, the audience there who might be interested in that opportunity. But it'll be a visually rich presentation. So she's scanning a lot of those items that we, that we purchased from Rick. And we'll have those as part of her presentation. So that's what the program looks like. And then the other piece we have to talk about is all of the jobs and responsibilities that go along with this. And I know we have a lot of people now who are still working full time in the daytime. So this may be a challenge. I guess that's the first question that I would wonder is, who thinks that they can be there the day of the event? Which is April 7th, right, Sean?
Yes, Thursday, April 7th at a, what, 10:30?
10:30, correct.
I, I can make it.
Yeah, I can, I can make it. Yeah.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I have a, a meeting conflict.
Okay. So no, Diana. Okay. So that's good to know, just sort of what was, so, so basically what we probably need the help with, and we can talk offline about it, since there's really only two of you who might be able to help on the day of, is kind of placing the orders for the pastries and then we need to pick them up that morning. The day before, we need to do some setup in the community room, getting the, the tablecloths and all of that kind of stuff. So anybody that's available to help to do that is welcome to, to do that and join us. And then again, the day of, it's just picking, picking the pastries up. And I could definitely probably use help with that because I think staff can take the lead on getting the room set up and getting everything organized and ready to go. But
I would love to help you pick out pastries.
You would?
Yes.
Speaking of, speaking of pastries, I noticed, which is great, we're using South Pasadena. But what about Coast and Pie? They're not on here.
No, I just made a, I asked Maida, who's lived here for a long time, what bakeries are in town? And these are just what she gave me. Who's the other one?
It's called Coast and Pie? Is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah, because I think it's supposed to be like cosine. I think most people say cos, but I think it's supposed to be cosine.
Is heirloom on that list? Heirloom?
Yeah.
Heirloom is, okay.
Yes, it's heirloom, Union Bakery, and then I recommend Coast and Pie. And then do, do we have a, is the budget, it's coming from us, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's a city account. And once we have a better idea of the number of people that are attending, we will know how many pastries to order. But we don't know yet. We're still working on getting our RSVPs. Sean's actually starting to reach out to the people that were invited because he's, he's, Sean, what are, what's the count right now?
Right now, so, so far, 141 invitations were sent out. I've gotten 29 yeses and 18 noes.
So he's reaching out to some of these people. I, I'm guessing we're going to have a smaller crowd than, than usual and that we'll have maybe 50 to 60 people. So we can buy, you know, 30 pastries from four bakeries and make sure we have enough to go around. So I think we don't have to go at great length into it. But if you're, if Dean is interested in doing, in helping with that, then we'll, we'll be in touch via email to, you know, pass that assignment along.
Can I, can I ask a couple of quick questions? What are we giving them to drink?
Coffee and tea and juice, like orange juice and water.
Suggest that we secure that from Jones?
I was gonna, we were gonna make the coffee in-house. We're using Jones with a program. Jones is going to do a program with us later this spring. And they're going to donate all of the
That was my thought, though, was that maybe we throw a few shekels to them because they're very, Chuck is really great at donating. And item number eight is going to lean on him very heavily, I'm sure. So if there is a budget, maybe we could at least add them to the list for pastries because they have some stuff as well.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to him about the, what the cost would look like. Mainly, I was thinking of doing the coffee in-house just because of cost.
Yeah.
But let me talk to him.
Pastries, maybe we can get from them.
No, Dean, Dean, Chuck gets his pastries from Coast and Pie.
Oh, well, never mind then.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't bake their own.
Yeah, they deliver them.
They don't make them. I just, I just thought, I was trying to spread the, spread the wealth.
Yeah, no, no. And, and well, that's why I thought we, we should include Coast and Pie. Because if we're, if we're doing South Pasadena local, I think. Now, Kenny and FJ, are there any other bakeries that, that were missing in South Pasadena? Or Ellen, is there another bakery?
There's Berry Opera.
Is there on there?
Oh, they're on there, okay.
How about, you know, with some diversity here. How about Lamonarca? You know, they do pastries.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we could do some Lamonarca.
Well, yeah, yeah, I think we were doing the, the Independence.
Right.
It's a chain.
Lamonarca is a chain.
Right.
They started out as an independent. So they're a chain. They're a chain now.
They're a big chain.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Never mind.
We use them a lot. If that, I mean, I buy pastries from them.
Yeah, their soupards are really good.
Yeah.
My emotional connection is to, to Berry Opera because they opened just as the pandemic hit.
Right.
And so, and look, I know all things being equal, but I just
Yeah, well, I think, let's just go with these four. I think we've got a good, let's just go with these.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe we could, I, I'm going to work to move us forward without shutting down discussion. But I think we, we can do the rest of this offline. If, if any of the other board members can take a look in your packet, see the things that we're looking to help, have helped with, and see if you can be available the day and see if you can be available the day before, day of, that would be great and let Kathy know.
Yep.
So then we move on to item eight, which is the parcel tax renewal.
Yes, and the main thing that I want to update you guys on this is having to do with roles and responsibilities. So we've had a lot of questions about what can you do and what can you not do? So here's where we've landed. The city attorney has the same opinion that they had before, which is that there shouldn't be more than two people from the board that are on serving on the committee, on the independent committee. But the fact is, we did have two people last time. So if that happens again, that's fine. So you can serve on 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 the committee. And then Sean did some good sleuthing and found that in the last round in 2015, the president of the board did sign the position statement in the ballot. So.
I've been I've already been asked to sign the position statement.
And you may do so. Last time Ed Pearson signed as president of the board. So I think you're okay to have one person do that. That's my that's my whole update was just to finally answer those two questions.
I really appreciate it. What I can say is that, you know, obviously, you're on the board of trustees, so you care about the library. This is an important revenue source for the library without which the hours that we just voted to increase would have to be cut and all of that. So I'm not making a pitch to the board as a board member, but it's something that I would ask that we all individually look into.
And we'll be at the next at the meeting in April. So I'm going to be working now in the next month with the city attorney and the city manager to draft a staff report that would we would bring to you in April to give direction and recommendation to the city council about how what the terms of the renewal should look like. So I'll be working on that and that would come to you guys in April. Sorry, Sean.
Councilmember Mahmoud would like to say something.
Yes, this is a good opportunity for me to alert you to a proposition that is being circulated by the California Business Roundtable, and it would limit in several respects the ability of local government to raise revenue. And what's of particular relevance for this committee is that, among other things, it would prohibit Evergreen parcel taxes. So I know we are proposing to go to an Evergreen. And should this initiative qualify for the ballot, it's a signature gathering. It's at the signature gathering stage right now. Then it would go on the ballot, on the same ballot that the parcel tax is on. It is being sponsored by the California Business Roundtable. The last time they did this, it was in protest of several cities, I think, maybe Oakland and perhaps Berkeley that had imposed a soda tax. And they then negotiated with the legislature and the ballot proposition was withdrawn. I don't know if they're attempting the same play this time, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. At least if you were asked to sign a petition to put it on the ballot, you should know the consequences and the city council. Yes, city council will be taking a position on this very soon.
So Diana, just from, do we then need a Plan B? I mean, that wouldn't be, even if it did get on the ballot, it wouldn't be law at the same time that we were trying to propose our Evergreen.
Yes, would be would we be grandfathered?
You know, I believe that nothing is effective until the county clerk certifies the signatures. And that takes usually about three weeks, sometimes four weeks. But my concern is both measures and and so it would depend, perhaps. Obviously, if it's a statewide proposition, that would be the Secretary of State. And presumably, they would take longer, but I don't really know. It's a good question for the city attorney. And do you want to ask it, Kathy, or should I? Well, at this point, it's it's premature because we don't know that it's qualified for the ballot. But if it does qualify for the ballot, then we do need an answer.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on it and we'll we'll ask the city attorney when the time comes. Thank you for letting us know about that. I would not have known about that without you.
Or not, or not great, I should say. So we're moving on to our proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 library budget, an appropriate next topic.
Yeah, so I just wanted to share this with you. This is the budget that was presented or submitted to finance. They're taking in their preliminary proposals from all the departments. And nothing terribly notable. The, you know, the bottom line is very similar to to last year's bottom line. The staffing expense, you don't see the salaries for full-time employees there because that's calculated by finance, but but that will include our request for a 10th full-time employee. So that number will be bigger, obviously, than it was in 2021, 2022. The part-time budget is is a bit smaller, and that is in consideration of the idea that we would be getting a full-time employee. So we would be giving up a part-time clerk in order to to secure that full-time employee. What else is notable? We did, I did increase the the book DVD/CD budget and the ebook budget. And we were able to do that by skimming a few thousand dollars here and there off of accounts that just over the last few years, we haven't needed the money. So we have, for example, building maintenance where we keep a fairly large amount of money in case something happens. And I think there's still plenty there. We've reduced that by 20, well, a little about about $2,500. So I think there's still plenty to cover anything that could come up, but just skimmed a few places so that we could increase the book budget a little bit. And then under capital outlay, those numbers are the first one, building and improvements, that $18,400. Part of that is for new tables and chairs on the library patio. Some of that funding, we're hoping, is going to come from the friends at the library, but they won't be able to cover all of it. So we would have the some funds set aside here to cover the remainder, the part that the friends can't cover. And also, that is for some climate control for the office in our admin area that doesn't have any climate control because we really need this space and it's you can't have someone sit here. It's too hot or too cold, one or the other. And then the $12,000 for machinery and equipment, that is. Where did I do with my? Sorry, I've been thinking about budget and so many other things that now suddenly off the top of my head, I don't know what that's for. Oh, I know what that's for. That is for furniture for the support services staff downstairs. You know, they're sitting at desks that are like 1960s, you know, metal desks. They are not ergonomically appropriate at all. So we want to just ask for the money to put in some new workstations that would be more appropriate. So that's pretty much the the budget. No, no big surprises. But if you have any questions or concerns, now is a good time to let me know so that I can make sure finance, you know, anything that we we want to change, that finance knows about that.
I'm just curious about the big blank, the big gray blank. Is that because those are things we don't have any say over? They're they're subject to the other amount?
Correct. Those are all based on the full-time salaries. So those numbers finance calculates.
And then the the professional services is quite a bit lower, but it was quite a bit higher last year. Is that again, the issue of the full-time, the additional full-time, or is that something else?
That's the strategic planning. So it was bigger last year for strategic planning. And without without the strategic planning, we just don't need as much. So I set aside, it's actually maybe a little bit more than than we need. That is for the $7,500 for the auditors who do the parcel tax administration. We set aside about 5,000 in there for any technical support we need from the city's IT vendor. Because if we get the laptop lending kiosk, that's a special project. That doesn't, you know, we have to pay for their services to help us get that implemented. I don't think it would be anywhere near $5,000, but you you never know. We're going to hopefully have.
Budget.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have a new employee that is working on these kinds of projects. So we might have some other projects that we need their help with. So yeah, that's what professional services is this year, and that's why it's so much less is just because it doesn't have the strategic planning piece.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
I just wanted to note in response to your question about the gray area, the city's collective bargaining agreements with all of its bargaining units expire at the end of this fiscal year. And so we're currently in negotiation. I haven't yet been apprised of the status of negotiation. But that's another reason why the area is gray because we just don't know.
Got it. Okay.
And one more question. What's the increase in professional services? A significant increase?
It's a decrease from, where am I? Yeah, it was $27,000 this this current fiscal year, and we're asking for $15,000 next fiscal year.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Okay. Now, I see. I was looking on the spot. Yeah.
Kathy, you said that that was for the strategic plan, but we're hiring a strategic planner right now. So is that budget money that's just available from last year that'll be used coming up?
Well, it's this current year's budget. So so that the balance in that account, I think, is almost, we've spent maybe a little, well, we spent money on the parcel tax, but basically that money is sitting there waiting to to pay the.
So it doesn't go away.
Yeah, if we need to, as long as we have the contract signed, we should be able to use that money to pay them, even if it rolls into the next year.
Excellent. Anyone else? FJ? Bianca? Okay, well, let's move on to our next item, library operations update. So this is the big one.
It's actually fairly short this this month. So I wanted to come back around to the Be Kind to Animals event, which Diana brought up. We talked about it the last meeting. Staff did look into it and kind of came up with a version of the event that we could do. But then we found out that the Community Services Department had already been in communication with the commissioners and is handling that event this year. So we will not be involved in that this year. But it's possible that we would be in future years. So I just wanted to update everybody because that was a big topic last month. Wanted to let you know that last week, the Will Eisner Book Discussion, virtual book discussion, was a good event. Bianca, did you attend that? No? It was a it's a graphic novel, so it attracted a different, maybe different crowd. But it was really apparently a very good lively discussion. Masking changes, that's the big the big news around the library and all the libraries is that we no longer are requiring people to wear masks. Masks are strongly recommended in the library. We are going to continue to require them in the children's room because we have the zero to five-year-olds that are not vaccinated. And so that is our what our signage is going to look like, all the signage is at the printer. So we should hopefully have our new signage any day now. And so far this week, it's it's gone well. I took a, I put together a little survey for the staff to take because I knew there was some anxiety around this, you know, idea of suddenly being thrown in with the public and and no masks. And people on the spectrum of very worried, well, not very worried to very, very worried. Everybody was sort of right in the middle or just to the right of the center. So people were sort of, nah, I'm okay with it. I'm not crazy about it. I'm a little bit worried. And I had a few people that are very worried, but for the most part, I think people are okay with it. And and then this week, what we're finding is that many people are wearing masks anyway. So it's just, one of the questions that I asked them in the survey also was, is it worse to have to be the mask police or worse to have to be around unmasked people? And everybody said that it was worse to be the mask police. So that's just a huge burden off of our shoulders, you know, not having to just constantly tell people to wear their masks. So that's the big change this week, though, and it's going fine. In-person programming, we started again, going very, very well, like Bianca said. Storytime, you know, we do that three times a week. We've had between 50 and 70 people at each storytime. I went out this morning for this morning's storytime. There was at least 70 people there, lots and lots of kids and families. And then we're doing craft lab at the at the patio picnic tables on Thursday afternoons. And that's been about 50 people coming to participate in that craft. So good numbers, really exciting. A quick update on staffing. We thought we, you know, we now are, we're in good shape. We have our clerks. We we promoted two people into vacant clerk positions. So we have two new clerks, and those are promotions, which is wonderful. So all of our clerk positions are filled. We now, though, have five aides vacancies, five out of 10. And the four people from the last recruitment that we made offers to, first two of them dropped out, then another one dropped out, and then the last one dropped out. So we went through a whole recruitment, made four offers, got no employees. So we just closed this new recruitment. It just closed today. We have 113 applications. We're going to look at them a little differently. I think we're usually looking for people with library experience and looking for people with that background. But I think we're going to look for people that maybe are less experienced and that can be trained on the job and will be more likely to to want the position at the salary rate that's being offered. So we will go through those 113 applications as quickly as we can and try to get those interviews done so we can get some staff on board. It'd be a real challenge to go back to to 58 hours a week when we only have half of our aides, but we're committed to to doing it. Well, you might see me on the desk. You might see Maida on the desk. You might see us doing all kinds of things. But hopefully, we can move through those applications quickly. And then the weekend in charge librarians that we hired, they're both, they started a couple of weeks ago, and they're both getting trained and getting some experience. I think that they're going to be great. They're going to be able to, you know, run the library on a Sunday so that the full-time staff don't have to work on Sunday. So that's going well, but it is, there is a lot of training involved. So they're getting trained. I wanted to mention something that the police department let me know about. They let me know that the San Gabriel Valley Cog had funding for 294 overtime hours for police to do homeless outreach. So between now and the end of May, they have those 294 hours. So that's great. They're focusing on the business district, the library park, the train station, kind of, you know, where you would expect them to to focus. So hopefully, we'll have some some extra folks out doing some of that work for us. I wanted to let you know, if you haven't already gotten an email from the city clerk, you're going to get an email from the city clerk about your Form 700. Your Form 700 is your Statement of Economic Interests, which you have to fill out as a member of a commission from the city. So you'll get that from the city clerk. And if you have any questions about it, she just feel free to to communicate with with them about it. But or ask me. But I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up, especially the new the new trustees who wouldn't have done this before. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is something that probably doesn't apply for you guys this year, but every year, the California Library Association has a division that's devoted just to boards and friends groups. And they do a one-day conference every year called Serving with a Purpose. And typically, the subject matter, it can be everything from library advocacy to fundraising to, I don't know what else. You know, anything that might be of interest to foundations, boards, and trustees and friends groups. And this year, the 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 topic is Representation Matters, Building a Better Board. So I think it's really very focused on the foundation and the friend side this year. So I'm not necessarily recommending that you attend unless you have some great interest in it. But that is coming up, and I can send that email out if you're interested. But I think that there will be members of the friends attending. I'm assuming, right, Ellen? You guys will attend? Yes. So Ellen will attend and and then maybe next year, it'll be something, a topic that's more appropriate for for trustees. And that's all that I have for the library update.
Well, thank you. That was that was great. So now we have our communications segment. I'm board president, so I get to go first. I'm very excited to be the board president. Bianca, I've been paying somewhat attention to what what you were doing in the past, and I will lean on you heavily as my VP. For support. As I said, I'm looking forward to. Maybe moving discussion forward, we sometimes have a tendency to get into funnels. And we can redirect ourselves. But I really great to meet you both Kenny and FJ, I'm sorry, Annie wasn't able to be here tonight. And it's going to be a wonderful year, Kathy, you guide this ship well, and I see no reason that that's going to change, so, thank you. So do we, our board, so I guess I'll go around the horn here, Bianca Richards.
Yeah, and again, I just wanted to say uh, thank you. For, you know, for my term as the president, I just really have enjoyed it, and. I've learned so much, so thank you Diana and Kathy and Sean for reminding me. I think when when they had all those commission meetings, I was one of the the persons who said that. I think it's very valuable to be on a commission, and I think it's really good to try to be on a commission like two times, because it really is a learning curve. And and I've been fortunate, this library Board of Trustees is a fabulous commission trustee organization to to be on, so and it's wonderful. The staff is wonderful, the, you know, the staff liaison Diana, we've been lucky to have you, it's been wonderful. And then with the friends and having, you know, Sally and now Ellen back again, and then the different. New commissioners, so I just wanted to say, you know, I'm glad I'm still here. This, though, this will be my my last time to be on the commission, I think we can only, if I'm correct Diana, we can only be. Two consecutive.
Two consecutive three-year terms, right, but she she's not going to go away soon. She's got.
No. No, 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 I'm going to be on this commission, but then after that, but I just, I'm just saying, it's it's a, I I really encourage residents to be on commissions, it's it's very good, so. So thank you, and that's all, that's all I have, and just looking forward to just working with everybody, and you know, and. You know, Dean, we there's a lot of stuff that we we want to do with the strategic plan with Measure L. You know, I still want to do big fundraising, Sally and Ellen, I would still love to build a new library, so. So thank you.
Thank you, Bianca, Kenny.
Yeah, nothing much to add or communicate, except that, you know, now with my second meeting, almost under my belt, I see the first one wasn't a fluke in that. Everyone seems to be so focused and. You know, good at spotting the issues and seeing the big picture, and it's very impressive, so I'm glad to be part of this group and and look forward to it.
Thank you Kenny, FJ.
Yes, the one thing I wanted to add, and Dean, you'll you'll certainly understand this. I'm talking about volunteerism for the the library, and Dean, as you know, a big part of scouting is giving back to our community. And being a leader in troop seven in the past, you know. Well, we were a big part of, and we still are in in contributing to our community garden, which has just been like this amazing. Oasis that the community has embraced, and so. I bring it to Dean and Kathy, is there anything we can do? Because I have plenty of scouts, a lot of older guys that, you know, the part of their rank advancement is community service hours, and so whatever we can do. To kind of help the library, you have a you have a direct connection.
It'd be lovely to have them for the volunteer event, but I think that follows follows.
Right in school.
I know, I know.
But if there are jobs, Dean, that certainly on the weekend, like I know, I and I've I've done it myself, in the back of the library, you can donate books. If there's something that we can do, you know, physical labor, these are young guys.
Frank, Ellen, Ellen will take you up on that.
So Ellen, please, because we've got guys that are ready to work. And whatever we can do to help you and our library.
This was something that Sally asked for last year. On at least one one or two occasions, to have scouts come in and assist with that, so. It'll be great to have you around FJ that we can rally with.
Well, I I would just like to add that we actually have had a number of Girl Scouts do their Gold Awards with us, so we had. Scouts develop like classes, you know, animation classes that then they teach to the younger tweens. So there's a lot of opportunity, and typically, they just reach out to us with their ideas, so if you have folks in your troop that. You know, have some idea, then they can just reach out to us and we go from there.
Right, the gold award is similar to the, you know, Eagle Scout rank, and so, yeah, they would have to come to you with a game plan in place. But just know, if there is a laundry list of things needed to be done for the library that you need young guys moving, you know, that can help out, just know that we're available.
That's great to know, thank you, FJ.
Sure.
Outstanding, thank you very much, FJ.
Sure.
So that that's our board, so I would like to go and introduce council member Diana Mahmood, our council liaison.
Thank you, and thank you Bianca for your hard work, your dedication, you've been an excellent leader of the organization. At the helm of this group, so thank you so much, and I'm so pleased to learn that you'll be assisting Dean in an assistant. Capacity, that is terrific, and congratulations Dean for stepping up, and you run a very efficient meeting. Which I know everybody really appreciates, because I know you've you've been to a few in in your lifetime. I want to congratulate Kathy, I'm not, I'm, I don't know. And I just got an email from the city manager, so I don't think this was in your agenda packet, but. We are so honored that Kathy Billings has been designated by Assembly Member Chris Bolden. As being a Woman of the Year for South Pasadena for his Assembly District, and as Dean just noted.
That's huge.
Above and beyond, she works so hard, and we are so blessed to have you, and so I can't think of a more fitting candidate, so congratulations Kathy. And it will be a public event, and so hopefully, Sean, we can send invitations to the trustees for the date. It it used to be a public event, I'm, I would hope that they would continue to do that, I don't know. But it typically used to be held during the month of March, but since the announcement just came out, it may slip over until April, but. Sean or Kathy, I do think the trustees should be invited to the event. FJ, one of the things where we do need some help is at the Be Kind to Animals event. If it's held as it has been in the past. We had to move it from the city council chambers, because we were in violation of the barcode, because we have so many kids. There's all of these families, and they all come up at once, and they all check in, and so there's check-ins to be done. There's quite a bit of of work, and also Kathy may be set up of if it's going to be held again in the community room, so stay tuned.
Absolutely.
If you don't, if you don't mind, I will let Sheila Pouch, who is the Director of Community Services. Know, or maybe Kathy, it would be best if you do that, because then you can provide his contact info.
That's great.
But we might have something for you, and that again is the first week of of the month, and. I think we usually have it on a Monday or Tuesday, but it's usually the first week of the month, and then finally. This, I I know we're doing this meeting over Zoom, I'll note that next week's city council meeting will be in person. So I would assume that your next meeting will be in the Ray Bradbury Room, let's hope so, anyway, barring. Barring the next rapid emergence of a variant, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahmood, I would like to move us over to our representative here from the Friends. Which I believe is Friends President Ellen Torres.
Yes, thank you, and I want to apologize for last month missing, I was in Sacramento and a board meeting that they have comeback meetings after meetings. So I was in a meeting for that, so I'm, I read the minutes, if I repeating stuff, I apologize, but we've been kind of busy and. Carrying on the work that Sally started, so first of all, the Friends received a really generous donation in the amount of three. Thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from filming on Orange Grove Avenue, south of Monterey Road, they wanted me to make sure that you knew a south of Monterey Road. So what all have, what happened with the film is all the neighbors decided to donate the portion that they were going to get for being inconvenienced. And they decided to give it to the Friends, and it goes to the Friends General Fund, so what a very generous donation by those neighbors. So thank you to them, and speaking of Zoom meetings, you know, we are challenged a little bit with our meetings, they're at one o'clock, that's why we're going to be doing a survey. But our board voted, and I tried this out at my board meeting that I was up in Sacramento for. To buy a Zoom camera next go to meeting for use for hybrids, so that means we're not having to, it's like an owl, so it's head circles. And we don't have to be moving our our. Our laptop around, so it will be there, and if you guys need it for any reason, for your meetings, let's say somebody can't attend. That you are welcome to use this device that we're getting, so we're going to try it out on our March seventeenth meeting, I'm really excited about that. I just want to let you know that the Friends now has adopted a DEI statement, and it is up on our website. For diversity and equity and inclusion, so that was adopted by our board members, and also on the website, I got a bio from each one of our board members. So that's up there, so you can check this out, see who we are, a little bit about ourselves, and we kind of did all this to help the. The library staff with the applying for the grant for the South Pasadena, I mean, not for the South Pasadena, I'm on that committee, so that's why I said that, for the Tournament of Roses. For the the regular Tournament of Roses, so we're kind of moving along in in those lines, when you talk about. The serving with a purpose, we have four of our board members going, I've already registered them, I do think it is really kind of important. For the trustees, maybe this is not the time to go, but I know in previous years. I I had a great conversations and got to to know some of our trustees just by sitting with them at the same table, sharing ideals, and then having lunch with them, so. If you have the free time, it's on May nineteenth, and if you register early, it's only sixty dollars, so also. Through Sally, we we learned about Jericho Road, it's a nonprofit that helps other nonprofits, and we reached out to them last year. About maybe helping us with some items, and so we decided to postpone it to the new term, and I have applied. To them to ask them to possibly help us mostly with our website, our website is not user-friendly, I don't like it, I don't think it's very pretty. So we reached out to to help develop a new website, maybe some board development, helping us with a retreat if we decide to go there, and possibly some business development. But unfortunately, they have been closed for a number of weeks now, because they their director left, and so they were searching for a new director. And they will open back up on March fifteenth, and then they will start looking at applications again, so these are no cost, these are volunteers that go out, I know Bianca's familiar with them. And they find other community volunteers that have expertise in some of these areas, so like web design and everything, so I'm kind of excited about that, and we'll wait to see what happens if they get back to us. Bookstore, so maybe the boys can help, and I'll pass that information on with the scouts, I'm sure we have girls that are in scouts also, so. They are almost, I think, back up to a full-time schedule, running, opening, they keep adding hours, and in the month of January, which. I think this is amazing for, you know, books, they raised thirty, I mean, three, three thousand dollars in January.
Just in January.
And yes, and this is the exciting part, a thousand of that came for the fifty cent books, they raised a thousand dollars off the fifty cent books. So that's, yeah, yeah, it's it's great, and they have their monthly book auctions with special books that they're in the library in a case. So you may want to check those out, they're really, really special books, I'm excited that our restoration concerts are back. In person again after being shut down due to the Omicron variant, so their last concert was on. March sixth, and then they have a couple other, and they will do two, I think, in May to make up for some of the ones that they had to close down all. Our newsletter now is not a month, it's not quarterly, we decided that it would be. Beneficial for us not to send as many emails out, so we're going to do a monthly news update that hopefully. It will have everything that's happening with the Friends and and maybe some past events in there, but we just thought it was more timely that you weren't getting old news that was already in the local newspapers. And it would save a lot of inbox emails, and lastly, if you haven't done so, I would like to invite all the trustees. To become a member of the Friends, and it's really easy to do, you can just go to our website and join online, and or there's envelopes that we can provide you with, so. I would hope that you would do that, and I thank you for your time.
And if you donate a hundred dollars or more, you get a lovely bag.
You get a lovely bookstore tote bag, and I think I think it's over two hundred, you would get preferred seating at one of the restoration concerts. All the perks are listed online, so you can, you can check that out.
Thank you very much, I'm glad to have you here, so number fifteen is the trustee liaison to the Friends, which. I believe was just appointed, I was at two meetings ago, but I don't know if there's been a meeting since that was missed.
Well, we had one, we had our February with the new board, so that, I think you were you were at that one, no, I think you were at the annual meeting.
I was at the annual, so was there anyone from our the Board of Trustees there, so that will be Bianca next time. So if it's okay with everyone. I guess we're going to have Sally tell us what happened there, since she's here, but.
I mean, I was there, I think Ellen covered it.
I covered it, that was that was kind of the report from that meeting.
Kind of figured. Well, great, so what we have left is to hear from the one and only Kathy.
And I don't have anything else, except that I did want to mention that. That the next meeting you should plan on, if not it being hybrid, it being in person. I'm not sure how much longer the emergency order will go on that allows us to have the hybrid and or, you know, hybrid virtual. But for sure, it won't be all Zoom next month, it'll be, it'll be some of us in the conference room and perhaps some people at home, but that even that, I know that they really want to encourage folks to start coming back in person.
Just out of curiosity.
Apparently, apparently legally. We've been advised that governors, even though the governor's latest executive order amended his prior executive orders. In many respects, it continued the public emergency until June thirtieth.
Oh, June thirtieth, okay.
Right. So it's at this point up to the discretion of the city manager, but I suspect if if we are meeting, if the city council is meeting in person, I suspect. That will start to apply to commissions.
Yeah.
Is there anyone, any of the commissioners that are interested in continuing to meet via Zoom? Okay, I'll be, I will show up in person and everything.
But when we, when we go to the meetings, though, we we can choose to wear a mask, though, it's not like.
Of course.
Yeah, so, yeah, and we're not going to get bullied for wearing a mask.
No.
No, and I will hope that we won't bully anyone for not wearing a mask, but I would personally request that if people. Are not offended by doing so, wearing a mask, at least for a little while longer, I think will make us all feel a little more comfortable. Some of us high-risk folks. With that, I believe we're going to adjourn at what, eight twelve PM? Have we set a record, people?
You know, dare I say, it's the power of the new Board of Trustees. Do I dare say that?
I would love to think so, FJ, I think it's more the power of, we really didn't have a lot on the agenda.
I know, I know.
I would, I would urge you all to be ready for a two-hour meeting next month.
I will be ready, we'll be ready.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You've been all very gentle with me my first time. You've been all very gentle with me my first time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dean.
Good job, everybody.
Good job.